So, good afternoon. It almost seems like evening out there with the dark as it is, but it's still just afternoon. So, welcome to our study session today. We're going to talk about boundaries. So, Michelle, make some introductions here.
Sure. So, while Dr. Reyes is getting organized to get started, I just wanted to really kind of set a context for the board in terms of what this presentation's intention is. So, the Boundary Committee has been working very hard. Susanna has kind of multiple layers of support for the process in play. So, tonight is really just an opportunity for you as a board to get updated on where they are in their process and to get a sense or a feel for their decision, kind of the things they've been considering up to this point. What is not ready for you to weigh in on are any formal boundary proposals that will be going to the community. I'll let Susanna and her guests talk about kind of next steps and so forth. So, it's an update in the process, where they are so far, the tools that are being used to consider different boundary options. And then, you will be asked at the end to engage around a real formal tool to analyze some priorities and some interests that were identified as guiding principles. Sometimes what happens in processes when you're using guiding principles is when you get to a certain point in that process, you, there's an awareness that there's principles that are competing and the committee's at that place where they need some guidance from you as a board. So, there's a real structured tool that you'll be engaging with at the end. It's kind of like if somebody asks you to turn right and left at the same time because turning's a priority, where you can't do both of those at the same time. So, one has to be more important than the other. So, this tool will help kind of ferret that out and be a way that you as a board will give broad guidance to the committee as they continue their work. So, again, we're not going to be asking you to weigh in on any specific boundary revision or boundary revision proposals. Instead, just learn about where we are in the process. So, with that, Dr. Reyes?
Thank you. So, good afternoon, President Christensen, members of the board, and Superintendent Whitney. As Superintendent Whitney shared, purpose of today's study session is to provide you an update on the boundary revision process. And this afternoon, we also have Mr. Spencer Montgomery here with us. Mr. Spencer Montgomery is the project manager for J U B Engineers and they have been supporting our efforts. Okay, as you know, we have several schools that'll be opening up in the next couple of years. And in May, we launched a survey in Russian, Spanish, and English to our community, asking for input on how they would like for us to work through this process. And then, we received approximately 650 responses and over 125 from our Spanish-speaking community to the, to the survey. In May, June, and July, we also held a number of Boundary Committee meetings. And I've also been attending the bilingual parent advisory committee meetings and sharing updates with our Spanish-speaking families on this topic, but also on the long-term facilities management planning process. So, and then, more recently, we enlisted J U B Engineers to help us with the deeper analysis of the residential data of our community in terms of numbers, programs, and future growth, et cetera. They'll be assisting us for the remainder of the process and ultimately, we plan on providing you with scenarios for you to take action on. These are the guiding principles that were developed as a result of the analysis of the survey and include your input from the May 22 board study session. We've been using these to guide our process as well as looking at scenarios, kind of how they match up. Our next steps will include tomorrow's, oops, I'm sorry, did that knuckle? Our next steps will include tomorrow's Boundary Committee meeting. We're reconvening that working committee that met over the summer. And we also plan on holding or hosting community meetings at the end of the month at Livingston, Mark Twain, and Maya Angelou. So, we'll be sharing information, inviting our community and parents to participate in those. The 26th, 27th, and 28th of November is what we're planning on. Then, we'll come back to you in December with an additional update on where we are. Okay? So, now, I'd like to introduce Mr. Montgomery and he'll be reviewing the topics on this slide as well as other details regarding the process thus far. And we have, we'll have graphics and handouts for you that he'll be sharing with you.
I got these out here for you. You call them these tools. When we're going through a process with your staff and with the data that's available from Power School, right? Where it originates from? And there's a lot of information, a lot of information to work through. And if you need me over here, so I can pick it up?
And then, this is the slide that's there and then, when you're ready.
Right. Oh.
Yeah. You have to go in here.
Okay.
Well, I had originally thought that I'd prepare a page to talk about each one of these bullets, but there are so many tools that I'd really like to go over with you. I think you know a lot of the issues. The guiding principles, I think, highlight a lot of those with respect to trying to use natural boundaries. You've got schools opening, elementary school 16 this fall, I guess it's next year, so we'll call it next fall, and then, elementary 17 and a middle school in the fall of 2020. And then, also Stevens Middle School replacement in January 2021. So, there's a lot going on. We had a kickoff meeting about a month ago with your staff and just discussed a lot of issues and they had a couple of big picture questions for us. And so, the third bullet up there, the West-Pasco-North-South Analysis, I'll talk a little bit more about that after I get into some of our tools. But what they wanted to know is, can we use I-182 as a natural boundary? It's man-made, but as a boundary for both elementary and middle school boundaries so that we can, you know, basically have all the kids south of the freeway attend a school south and north of the freeway as well? So, we've done some analysis along those lines. Also looked at Central and East Pasco a little bit, although our priority is obviously getting ready for elementary school 16 this next fall. So, we're going to talk a little bit about some boundary scenarios. We've got some of those, I'll show you here shortly. And then, if you have questions, we have time. As mentioned earlier today, as we were discussing some of the issues and concerns, how can, how can we help the process to balance some of those competing issues and concerns? And so, we have an exercise for you to go through at the end and we'll try to leave some, some time for that as well. So, I'm going to go through just some of the tools that we've developed. And I'll preface that by saying, early, earlier on this summer, you have a Boundary Committee that met and they, they had drawn up some boundaries and then, they decided their, that they were in over their heads perhaps a little bit because they didn't know where the students were. And if you draw the boundaries and you don't know how many students in there, you don't, it's hard to make decisions that way. So, that's kind of why, why we were brought on board. And I should mention, although I work for J U B Engineers, work here locally in Kennewick, so I'm familiar with the growth. And in fact, I've actually done the traffic studies for maybe 10 of your schools over the last 10 years. So, it's been kind of, kind of fun to, to watch Pasco School District grow that way and be involved locally here in those efforts. But J U B Engineers has, has a subsidiary called Gateway Mapping and they're GIS experts and they've been helping a lot in this process to take the data that the school district has and be able to, to show it graphically here. So, you can, you can see there where the students live. So, this, this here represents just the elementary school students today, as of the middle of October, actually, sixth grades in the elementary school. The dot location is where the student lives. The color of the dot is where they go to school. And what I really want to point out here is that if, if you focus in, and I know it's, it's a little hard at the scale on the map in front of you, but the, the big map over there, if you have time, you can look at that and you'll notice that there's a lot of mixture of the colors going on there. So, there's a lot of kids and we're, we've been using the term migration, a lot of kids that live in, live next to one school that attend a different school. And that's for several different reasons. There's the Spanish bilingual program, the Spanish dual-language program, Russian bilingual program, Spectrum program, and I'm sure there's some that I'm not aware of. Okay? So, but there's, there's a lot of kids that are getting bused to different schools to participate and receive the services available through those programs. So, what, what we have done in, in some of the calculations that we've done, when we show you some of the scenarios in, in a little while, is we want to let you know that we've tried to account for that migration. And, and some schools like Frost have over 40% of their students come from outside their, their boundary. That's a lot of kids, 40% of the, of the students. And some of the other schools have about 20% that migrate out. So, there's, there's quite a range. And so, we didn't, we didn't want to provide any, any surprises that if we come up with a, a boundary scenario and it gets selected and implemented and you're expecting 600 students to be at, at a particular school and then, you realize, oh, wait a minute, when school opens that year, we got 750 here and we weren't, we weren't ready for that. So, we're trying to do account for, for that migration that, that occurs. Show you a couple more tools. Okay, so, so we've, we've prepared a number of different maps. I want to show you just a couple of them with respect to tools. This here shows dual-language students. And you'll notice that all of the dot colors are red and green because that program is offered in two locations at Maya Angelou and, and McClintock Elementary Schools. But yet, the students come from, from all over. And you can even see some mixture with green dots within the Maya Angelou school boundary and some red dots within the McClintock. So, based upon program availability, the year that those kids are starting a program, they, they may be bused to, to the other school that offers the program. Also, here's the geographic location of where the Russian bilingual students are that attend Frost. You can see that there's quite a few of those. In fact, there's only, I'm going to say a handful, but I think the number is about eight that live within the Frost boundaries. And so, the other 110 or 120 roughly are bused in for the Spanish bilingual program. I'm sorry?
Russian bilingual.
Did I say Spanish? Okay. We want to also let you know some of the other tools that we've been using to try to get our, our future forecasts as accurate as possible is some of the other work that we do, J U B Engineers, is we are in the process of helping the city of Pasco with their comprehensive plan update. So, they're in the process of expanding their growth boundary and we're aware of those kinds of things. So, we were able to get from them final plots and preliminary plots that are on file. Some of these have started to build out, I guess, and, and if you drive around some of them, you will, you will notice that. But what we have done here is, based upon some rates that were provided to us by the demographer that's helping with your long-term forecast, we've, we've come up with a number of students that we expect to be in homes that would be built in the next few years and we've matched this up with the rate of building permits for residential homes in the city of Pasco. So, I would mention here that there's, well, let me explain a little bit what the numbers are. So, the, the red dots represent our forecasted students in the next couple of years that would attend school. The parenthesis within the development represents the number of homes. And not all of those homes are going to be built within the next two or three years. There's a lot more within a few of those developments, the larger ones, especially the one out to the west, in, near the Broadmoor area, west of Broadmoor and north of the freeway. I forget to get the exact percent, but we, we estimated that a portion of that would, would be built in the next couple of years and the rest would come beyond that. And I wanted to give you the numbers for those is approximately 200 more homes south of the freeway would be included in these plots and about 320 north of the freeway, including, included in the plots that are on record today. We, we don't really have a methodology of knowing where else more plots would occur, but there will be more growth than what we're showing. We just don't know exactly where and how much. But the, but what we've represented does, does account for a significant portion of the historical trend for, for building permits in the city of Pasco. Also on this map, I don't know, you may see some numbers or, or letters on there that you, you don't understand. We've broken the, the whole district into what we're calling neighborhoods. And so, you can see some smaller, smaller symbols in there, L6 and A3. And, and later, you'll see some numbers next to those in a couple of different scenarios, I think, that represent either the number of elementary school students or middle school students. So, we've, we've got that level of effort here that we're using as a tool with your staff to help develop what-if scenarios. So, we, we put a scenario out on the table and we discuss it and they say, well, there's too many over here, not enough over here. We can look at that neighborhood and say, what if we move that from one school to another? So, that's what that is underlying the, the map here for us. And we have those numbers for basically K through eight. I'm going to go ahead and leave that up there for a minute while I talk about a couple of other things. We, I told you a little bit about what I call a North-South Analysis. And what we, what we needed to do was to forecast how many students there would be based upon growth and then, younger kids that would be coming into the school, in kindergarten, first grade, et cetera, over the next couple of years. And then, look at what that student count would be next fall with sixth grade in all the elementary schools. And then, the following fall with all three of the new schools open, but sixth grade moving up to, to middle school. So, we've looked at that just kind of big picture to see if, to see if the capacity of elementary schools south of the freeway and west of 395 could accommodate the, the number of students there. And same thing for the north, can that be a boundary that would be used, the I-182? And then, how does that work for middle schools? And the, the short answer for that basically is, for elementary schools, yes, we can, we can do that. We can, I mean, we can do that. That doesn't necessarily mean that that's the best choice to, to make. Okay? And, and we'll explain some of those things to you here shortly. For middle schools, what happens is there's too many students north of the freeway to go into the new middle school up there and it would leave McLaughlin short. So, so I think the short answer is that you have 16, I'm going to call it full-sized elementary schools, and then, you've got Markham, a 17th one, right? It's a little smaller than the rest. And our recommendation is that once, once you've finished all the elementary school boundaries, put four in each of your middle schools and find, figure out which four it would be. At this point, to me, I mean, it makes a logical sense is that you'd have Twain, Livingston, number 16, and McGee would continue on at McLaughlin. And then, north of the freeway, you would have Franklin, McClintock, Maya, and 17. And then, you'd, on the Central and East, you would have Currie, Whittier, Robinson, and probably Longfellow would go to Ochoa. And then, the other four in the central area would attend Stevens. Let's see here. So, we had, I'm going to go ahead.
Have you analyzed, what about high schools? That would be a question that I know we'll get if you're picking elementary schools or going to go to a middle school, would we then have some sort of similar division for high schools?
That, that's a good question. We have not looked at that at, at this point. And are we looking at two high schools or three, right? But it's, that's one of the guiding principles was the feeder system.
So, one of the, the direction that we've received in the past is that we would look at high school boundaries when there was additional high school capacity. So, that would, that is a conversation that would occur at that point.
And, and there'll be a lot of changes between now and then and you'll be able to make a better, a better, more informed decision at that point. So, what you have here is what we're calling Scenario Four. And rather than burden you with the other three scenario details, let me just tell you kind of how we got here. I mentioned earlier that the Boundary Committee had, had met over the summer and created a, a set of boundaries for all the, the middle schools and decided, they didn't know how good that was or how bad it was or whatever because they didn't know where the students lived. So, that's where we started. And we took the information that the Boundary Committee came up and, and with the now new knowledge that we have of where all the students are and the migration patterns and things like that based upon the various programs, we said, what would that do to, to each of these elementary schools? And it came, became pretty evident real quick that it was a really good start. It gave us a place to start, but we said there, it doesn't leave enough in Livingston. It was, I forget the exact number, 217, I think, which is like way low. And so, we started taking some of those neighborhoods and said, what if we brought this neighborhood over here and pushed that neighborhood over here and tried to do some things with it? And got some suggestions from staff. And, and actually, the suggestions from staff became Scenario Two and, and they still didn't know where all the students were. So, we kind of took Scenarios One and Two and then, our Gateway Mapping folks, we sat down and we said, okay, now that we know where the students are, where does it make sense to, to draw some of these lines? And then, we met with your staff last week and refined that a little bit more and, and came up with Scenario Four. And, and just to reiterate, what Scenario Four does for us, let me, let me check here. Okay, here's, here's this, the student summary for, for Scenario Four based on where those boundaries. So, you can, you can keep the map in front of you and see this. You also have this table as well. But let me just reiterate some things that this does is it, it grows our four-year-olds, so to speak, to kindergarten. So, it, it accounts for, for growth coming in from younger kids and it also accounts for the growth from new development. And it forecasts those forward to year 2020 and then, it compares several different things. It, it also accounts for the migration between schools due to all the various programs that are offered. And, and so, we've come up with a to, a total number of students that would be attending each of the elementary schools as well as elementary 16 and 17. And this is in year 2020. If we need to, and, and we've done this just to make sure, is that, we've also done this for 2019 because sixth grade will still be in, in the elementary schools. So, we want to make sure that we're not overlooking a, a potential issue with the growth there. And, and the short story of that is that McClintock's pretty full today and there's some growth that's going to occur. And none of the scenarios that we've developed so far have changed the, the boundary for We've done changes up to the north, obviously, but McClintock, I think, is the only one that did not change. Because like we took the Stonegate Apartments in Scenario Four.
Maybe I, maybe I should, maybe I should review this just briefly here real quick. Behind here, behind here, you can see the color of the existing school boundaries, right? So, this blue up here currently attends Franklin. And above it, the purplish boundaries, it would get moved over to a school that's west of Frost today. Kind of what it would intend to be, we'd have to do. So, this neighborhood here currently attends Twain. It's kind of in that light green color, but because of this boundary, it would move over to Livingston. So, that's kind of what you see in the map there, just to make sure that you understand. This scenario changes nothing down here. The reason why we didn't change anything down there is because we wanted to be focused on 16 and 17. But yet, you'll recognize in the table here that, that you have for Scenario Four, you'll recognize that once sixth grade moves up, there, there's a lot of possibilities of where you could shuffle boundaries around to, to put neighborhoods back together, to get kids attending the school that's closest to them, using natural boundaries and, and all those different things that could occur in both the Central and the East. Let's see. This particular scenario, oh, let me, let me point out, this assumes that all of the programs stay where they're at today. Wanted to make sure that that was clear. There was some discussion, I want you to start getting the numbers, it's kind of interesting to start playing with them. And I mean, there's a bunch of iterations. But when we met with staff last week, they noticed some things that they were a little uncomfortable with. And, and so, they, they started discussing various things that could be done to, to address the issues that they were finding. And some of those issues were the McClintock one that I mentioned a minute ago. It's, it's really full. We haven't taken any students from there. It's possible to move, I think it's area M1 or M C1 that's east of, east of Road 68, west of Convention Drive, north of, I think it's Sandifer Parkway, all the way up to Burns Road. That neighborhood doesn't have a lot of, a lot in it, but it has, I think, 70-something. But there's, you can see, if you look at Google Earth, you can see that there's a road, roadway network existing there that they're going to be building some homes. So, there's going to be more growth coming in that's not represented in the plots that we showed you a little while ago. That information didn't come to us from the city, but, but you could tell that there's more coming. So, you could move that over to Maya Angelou, west of, west of 68 and basically swap the Stonegate situation that you have today, right? But we were a little uncomfortable with that because they can walk to Franklin, or excuse me, to, to McClintock. So, there was a lot of discussion about a lot of different things and, and nobody was really comfortable with, hey, this is the right answer. So, there's, there's that issue is one of the issues that we need some guidance with. Another one is using the freeway as a boundary because you'll notice that this scenario takes a couple of neighborhoods west of Road 100 that's south of the freeway and puts them in elementary school 17. And the reason for that is, is that if you want to use Road 68 and the freeway as boundaries and try to service all those, all those students with the two elementary schools that will be there, with Maya and with 17, then, there's just not enough students today. Okay, there's, I, I forget the number. Let's see if we got it real, real quick. We would have about 1,150. So, it's close, but, but staff was thinking, boy, we think that there could be a problem if there's only, if there's less than 600 students in a, in a brand-new school. We built it with 800 capacity. And so, where do we, where do we go to get more students? And so, they, they thought it made sense to, to grab a couple neighborhoods south of the freeway and west of Road 100. And that gets us close, but any, any other neighborhoods beyond that was, we're not so sure we really want to do that. We think that's against our, our guiding principles. So, those are a couple of the major issues, I guess, I think, that we're still, still working with a little bit to, to come up with something. I went through that really fast. I'm sure you have questions.
So, before we open it for questions, I just wanted to reiterate one more time for those folks who weren't here really at the beginning. None of these scenarios that are shown are ones that are being recommended for the board's consideration. This is just an update to the board of what the thinking is at this point. And there's, and there are meetings that are scheduled to continue the work around the, the aspects of concern that you just mentioned. The exercise that you'll walk the board through- The exercise that you'll walk the board through at the end of this meeting, where we identify the priority, when there are competing priorities, will give the committee guidance in how to move forward with this. So I just wanted to be really clear that I don't want people to leave like, oh, the district's recommending this proposal. This was just to give everyone an update where folks were with their thinking, how people were going, how the committee has been going about their thinking, et cetera. And so it's just a kind of a window into where the committee's been up to this point, some of the tensions that the committee's trying to work through, and to get some guidance from the board. So just for some clarity there.
Thank you, yeah. We've been kind of buried in this for a while, so I may forget some of those things. But just, just to update you and refresh on where we go from here, tomorrow night, we're going to meet with the Boundary Committee, go over a lot of this stuff, perhaps in a little bit more detail, give them an opportunity to ask questions and maybe dig into some of the issues, and what-if kind of scenarios. I think that this is a viable scenario. I mean, if, if we had to tell you what to do today, this is something that could work, okay? But there are, there are some, some challenges and some issues, and honestly, let me share an experience with you, okay? I live in Kennewick, attended a public meeting for their boundary changes about six weeks ago. And they opened a new elementary school south of South Ridge, in developing area, and they have a bunch of capacity, right? And so they said, we're going to put this program out there. And I don't, I don't remember what, what the program was. But now, a bunch of homes have been built, the school's full, and they're rebuilding another school, which gives them another opportunity to move boundaries around again. And so the public meeting was to say, here's three scenarios, let us know what you think. And they were, you know, some of the people that were there got moved last time, and now, because you know there's more homes going to be built by the new school, they're saying, okay, you went over there for three years, now we're going to bring you back where you were before. So that's kind of the competing, the competing challenge that we have here, is that where new Number 17's going to be, is a pretty high-growth area. And I would suggest you not fill it up real quick with whatever scenario, however you fill it up. I would, I would suggest that you leave some capacity there to accommodate some growth. And in fact, I think that, well, let me explain a couple of things here. You're all well aware that there's a lot of growth happening here, which is just in the east of Number 17, right? I forget if you backed up, but there's hundreds of homes going to be built here, a lot of students. Let me back up, and you can see. Okay, so you can, you can see those red dots, and all, that growth is coming. And one of our thoughts, as the consulting team was, don't put all of this in the new elementary school, right? Because if you want to do that, then you're going to open up the capacity, right, way over capacity, perhaps. There could be some people who'd be critical of that. So our suggestion was to put this in Livingston, and let Livingston help absorb some of that growth, so one school's not getting, you know, a whole bunch more students every year for, until that builds out. And then, our other suggestion up here was to put, put this side into Angelo, and that over there to Number 17. And Franklin's kind of a, pretty clear that that's going to go in Franklin. And in fact, since we met with your staff last week, we started saying, well, how can we solve this McClintock problem, and some other things? And we're not completely refined on this, but what we did was, we split a couple of these neighborhoods over here. Because when Franklin was built, I'll spend six, seven years ago, maybe? I remember doing the traffic study, saying, well, these guys live within the long area, both of these schools. But yet, now the line's drawn here, and they're so close to McGee, that we could take part of this neighborhood out of Franklin, so that it can serve that growth, and then, or should I say, better serve that growth, while, while McGee will have low, and will begin with. And so we could bring part of this, and we could split this one, there's a linear park there, that is kind of a natural boundary between this, this block neighborhood, and bring some of those from McClintock over to McGee as well. Interestingly enough, when we looked at the 2019 numbers this next fall, with the dual-language program at McClintock, and sixth grade there, and the growth that would be occurring in the McClintock boundary, they may need another portable, or two. But yet, if I remember the number right, it was, I want to say it was 73, or something like that. And there's 79 kids in that diagonal portion, the southeast portion of that neighborhood I just pointed to. In neighborhood, it's called MC5B. MC, obviously, McClintock, and 5 was just that block, and then we split it into A and B, so we could better, better tell how many students were in there. So we're refining things a little bit, and actually, I think that that could save some significant, I don't know how many bus riders there are in there, but I think that could save some busing costs, because they're, I think, too far for the walk area for, for Franklin, but they would be within the walk area for, for McGee. Are there other things that we've discussed that I haven't gotten to enough depth on, or do you have questions? That went a lot quicker than I thought, actually, because there's so much material here. So I'm sure I'm forgetting something that might be important for you to discuss.
Yeah, no, I'm sure there'll be plenty of discussion. Do you have this, this chart that you could pull up here? If not, that's fine.
Yes, yeah.
The students, the Scenario Four student summary counts, yeah.
Whoops.
That's perfect. So I think our, we don't have, we're going to be under capacity, all of our elementary schools if we move sixth grade back. And so really, to me, the new school is 200 under. I mean, they're all 100 to 200, and so it's silly to me to move students around. Every school's under, except for Frost and McClintock, and I think that we should, and we discussed recently about the dual-language, we're reevaluating that. And I think that needs to be looked at. McClintock, it's not sustainable, the way it is set up right now. So I'd like to see a chart like this with the middle school numbers. And, and I just foresee this, you know, the thing that's unique about Pasco, we don't have enough middle schools. So we're different than our other local, and pretty much every other school district is in this weird, we don't have enough middle schools. So years ago, the sixth grade was moved back to the elementary school. Now we're talking about moving back to the middle schools. We're going to way overcrowd our middle schools, that we don't have enough of. And we're going to be in the same scenario that we were in whenever that was done. I don't think I'd lived through it, you know, seven or eight years ago. And, and it's like, literally going to repeat itself in the next couple of years. So that is really concerning to me, you know. Really, to me, there's no issue in, in, all of our elementaries essentially are going to be under capacity, especially if you include portables, which we want to slowly retire over time, and not have portables essentially. So I just really think we need to look at that, and, and think through, when we had this discussion over the last couple of years since I've been on the board, you know, you make plans, and you reevaluate constantly over time, based on the information we have. And so to me, to look at this, and to say that we're just going to cram all four of our middle schools with students again, remembering all the discussion that was had from, from middle school students and their families, about their experience in an overcrowded middle school, and their loss of opportunities, and their, that just, I really think we need to reevaluate that.
Do you have any information for middle schools today?
Yeah, we have, we've looked at a couple scenarios, and, well, just for our team's edification, we looked at the natural boundaries and said, could, could Central fit between 395 and the railroad tracks? How would that work in Stevens? How would east of the railroad tracks work in Ochoa, south of the freeway in McLaughlin, and north of freeway in MS4? Won't work. Primarily because of MS4, there's just too many, too many kids up there. Of course, I'm thinking sixth to eighth grade, okay? And just for your information, there's about 1,565 sixth graders. So, and I, I haven't looked at the capacity of the, of the elementaries to see how close they are, but that's, it's a big deal. And it's a hard decision for you guys, and I know you went through a lot at the time that I was doing the traffic study for Curie and Whittier. And that was an interesting study, because the two, two schools are right next to each other, but...
So part of what the guiding principles were from this board in our community was this concept of feeder schools? So until the elementary boundaries are more dialed in, it's, we're not ready to talk about what those middle school feeder pattern boundaries could look like. So that would be the topic of the next study session with the board.
And I think I mentioned this, but if, if I did, forgive me, but we think it makes sense, once the elementary school boundaries land where they're going to land, is that you put four in each of the middle schools, except for, there would be five at the new MS4, which would include Markham, which is smaller than the rest a little bit. So, and, and I think the capacities are a little bit different, but, but we believe that they will work. But at that point, once we know where the elementary school boundaries are, then we can, then we can look and see what, what our best estimate is for forecasted population there. I want, once you get a minute, I won't say it'll be stable, because there, there will be growth. There's always going to be growth. But you'll have, you'll have a better, a better source of information on which to base that decision. And, and you can say, well, this one's a little bit over, and that one's under, are there any neighborhoods that would make sense to move from one, which would, which would depart from your feeder system analysis? And maybe you pick different schools, I don't know. I mean, there, but there's issues. But we think we have a reasonable approach for that, but it, I think it would be, I'll use the word distracting a little bit, to get into too much detail at this point with the middle schools. Our focus is primarily on the diversity that there is amongst the elementary schools, and all the different programs that are offered at that level. There's a lot, a lot of things going on with the migration and all that.
Yeah, I really like the concept of feeder schools, and it, it works great if we just had 16 elementary schools and four middle schools in our community, was just, that was our community.
No more growth.
Literally, when that fourth middle school opens up, if we move sixth grade back, we're going to need a fifth middle school, like we would have already needed it. And so the, the concept of, and I'm all in favor, I think it's great to think this way, to have the feeder. But, but literally, we're going to need to build a fifth middle school as soon as that fourth one opens up, so it's going to kind of disrupt that, that nice, oh, four and one, you know, four elementary schools plus Markham, and then four go to each other middle school. So again, I just, I feel like we're going to be back where we were 10 years ago.
So thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Appreciate you coming, sharing this information with us.
Okay.
So you have quite a task you guys have ahead of you. So, but, I just, I've got a couple of questions on this. I don't know if any other board members do, but... So in your analysis, these numbers right here, are you taking into account this, is this the students that live within the boundaries, or does this include those that are crossing boundaries as well currently?
It does include those that, that live outside the Pasco School District boundary. It's a little harder to forecast those into the future as they, as they grade out and more come in.
What I mean is, when we looked at those dots right there, we see that there's quite a few students going to different schools.
Yes.
And in these numbers, do they account for that as well?
Yes. It accounts, it accounts for new development, it counts for the migration for the programs, and it also accounts for students that live outside the district boundaries. For example, my niece used to live in Pasco, got married, now lives outside the district, but her daughter attends Chihuahua. So, but she's driven and dropped off as, you know, that way. So there's, there's some of that going on as well. We've, we've done our best to include all of those kinds of things in this, so that there are fewer uohs, when you actually set the boundaries.
I know this is going to be a challenge. Does anybody got any comments or questions, or we move on to the next part?
I was going to say, thank you, and without even looking at the details, I like how you guys have analyzed it in a methodical way, and tried to set the schools, and I know this is just an example, and it'll change before we're done, but set the schools in the, in the cases you can, in the middle of those boundaries. And it looks like it's, it's really well thought out. A couple of questions I did have is, I'm a little surprised, I get the 8,800 students is what we expect, when we take probably 1,500 out, if we move sixth grade out. But I am a little surprised by the building capacity, brick and mortar. I'm just, I don't want to know it now, but I'd like to understand the basis for that, because some of those numbers are quite a bit higher than the basis I feel like we've been seeing. And I think we had talked about using, you know, K3 class size reduction, and, and the capa, and the efficiency of the schools and that. And so I'd like to see when we sharpen the pencil, what that looks like, because it might show something different than what, you know, Dr. Richard, I, if, if those are the real numbers, I can understand Dr. Richardson's point there. But if the numbers are actually smaller in that building capacity, brick and mortar, it could change, you know, the, the optics of that. So I, I question those numbers, and I'm excited to dig into the details later. And then, back to what, or Mr. Christiansen's saying, I would also be interested in seeing just information later on an example like that of how full the school would be with no programs, so that we can kind of get a look at the neighborhoods themselves. And you could move programs around based on that, looking at, just look at that, and if there's a neighborhood where the school is only at 60% of its brick and mortar, but it's a fairly well-developed a boundary, that would be a prime candidate for putting programs into, if you could, versus putting big programs that grow fast into areas that are also growing fast with actual residents. But I think taking a look at that and digesting it might inform the team as to the direction that they're going, or that, that might be good to look at there.
That's a great point, and like Mr. Leonard, so McClintock would be a prime example of his point of brick, brick and mortar, capacity 773, and that's one of our smaller schools. So that would be a number I would question.
Yeah, I think all of these, I'm sure, at least I would expect, these are following the formula that was developed. But hopefully, if that is the case, and hopefully that is, because we want consistency, but we need to revisit that, because that doesn't even meet the OSPI numbers for match money, which we all believe is significantly low.
And I can speak briefly to that. We have the K3 class size reduction formula, using the scheduling factor and the design of the school, for planning purposes, as we look into the future. This is the calculation of the capacity operationally, how we're currently enrolling students in our schools, using the collective bargaining agreement for class size. So we can certainly show what it would look like using the K3 class size reduction, and compare that, and bring that back as well.
Do you know what I do like about this, is that we have room for growth in the places that we need it. I mean, there, I do not want to, we're going to have to figure out something with McClintock. It needs to not open, you know. I can't imagine having 773 kids out there, there at a consistent level. It's a little school. We've been through lots of schools. Franklin seems way bigger. And maybe it's just an optical illusion, but that's what it seems. It certainly has a lot less property. So I, you know, and I know it's really hard to move programs, but we, I don't know, that, I would rather move programs than take kids out of their neighborhoods. And that's a tough call, and I know it's really tough for teachers, but, and if we can get, get around it another way, then it would, then we can. These numbers, if you look at the total estimated students, 500, 500, you know, if, just looking down, about 500 students is where kids do the very best in an elementary school location. So I think, I think we're doing well. With that, we're getting a lot of those schools down around those more ideal numbers to educate our kids at. There have been so many issues with having the sixth grades at the elementary schools. It's not what the rest of the tri-cities does. It has created some real... It has created some real problems with mathematics that are really difficult to overcome because that is a point when kids really start to differentiate in different ability levels. And teaching fifth grade for a little while last year gave me a real sense of what a difficult task it is for a teacher to teach a child with literally, I don't know, 10 different skill levels. And having those kids in classes that they can be challenged in whatever they're doing can't happen at an elementary level where we are at right now. So, the other thing is we need another middle, middle school. And if we move all these people up in the middle school, keep everything overcrowded, we're not going to get a new middle school. So it's, and, and that's, that's the truth of the matter, you know? I didn't want to put, um, portables at Chihuahua High School, but we need a new high school desperately. And nobody can tell we need a new high school because it doesn't look like Portable City like everything else. So unfortunately, that's kind of the, the risk. I'm hoping that our next bond will have a high school and a middle school on it, and I'm hoping that we give it a couple of years to pass. And because once we do that, then we're set. And I don't want to start, I don't want to move kids more than we have to. And I feel like it's ideal to, to do this. I think some of the numbers need to be fine tuned, but I think it can be done. And I think that's what we agreed. Definitely smaller numbers at the elementary school than I anticipated. This is brilliantly done. It is clear, it is easy to follow the different neighborhoods that you put kids in and numbered them and the numbers and the growth and obviously, this has hours and hours upon hours. I just so appreciate this level of explanation for us. This just makes things very clear. And though we do have some hard decisions as a board to make, it's going to be so much easier for, with this. So I thank you for this work. It's, it is really exceptional.
Thank you. Been, been a lot of fun, too. See the bags under my eyes?
All right. So did we have another part of this that we need to work through?
We do. And I like some of the comments that they just made, and we'll tell you how those can apply here. So... So I've talked with your staff a little bit about kind of this, this notion of competing interest, that you can't do this and accomplish that at, at the same time, just given some of the information that we've learned, right? An, an easy one for me to explain is the issue of north of the freeway and west of Road 68, there's just not enough kids in there to fill up Angelo and 17. So what do you do? You're going to cross 68, you're going to cross the freeway, or do you go ahead and leave it a little bit empty at first? Empty isn't the right word. Less, less crowded, what, pick a word, I don't care. But, but do you want to leave room for the growth that you know is going to be coming, right? So, so I talked to them about this, about using this little exercise here to help us all better understand those competing interests. And we call this a pair-wise comparison. And basically, there's, we, we picked seven of the guiding principles. And I'll let Superintendent Whitney explain how we got to those seven if, if we need to, but you can see them on here, A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. And, and what we need you to do is to compare each one, each, each pair, okay? So you can look at neighborhood schools on the, on the top, top row on the left, and then the, the vertical columns there says recognize natural boundaries. So look at those two things. Do I think neighborhood schools is more important than recognizing natural boundaries? Decide which one you think is more important. Write that letter in the box. And then decide whether it's a lot more important, a little more, or medium, medium preference or a minor preference. And you go through each of those comparing each, each one. And, uh, so you're going to compare neighborhood schools against recognized na-, natural boundaries. You're going to compare it against how, how much you think it's more or less important than seeking long-term boundary solutions. You're going to compare it with consider school bus transportation efficiency, minimizing impact to students to the extent possible, reducing overcrowding and feeder schools. And each one of those guiding principles may mean something a little bit different to each of you, right? The concept of feeder schools has been discussed a little bit today. Natural boundaries, do we want to use the freeway? There, there are some smaller boundaries, but that's a, that's a major one out there. There's the railroad tracks, there's things that separate neighborhoods, right? Long-term boundary solutions. The, the version of this map that the consultants came up with tried to spread the growth around. We think that will last for a longer time period, right? School bus transportation effici-, efficiency. We have not prepared, but we could, uh, the walk areas for each of the schools, right? So you could say, how many of these kids live within the walk areas? Is there a way that we can get them? Because some of the schools are close enough together that kids live, live within the walk area of two schools. So even though you might be taking them from across the street from, you know, they live across the street from Angelo, they could still walk to number 17, right? Is that something you want to consider? Minimize impact to students to the extent possible. I, I think that means move them less, right? If they've already been moved, it might be okay to move them back where they were because it's a closer school, but do we want to just push this neighborhood around because, you know, a whim? And then reduce overcrowding. Obviously, the capacity that's being built is going to address a lot of that, but we've talked about McLean Talk a little bit and, you know, some relief needs to be provided there as well. So if you guys could all do this, I understand that the intent would be to collect them before you leave today. I thought you have a break in a little bit that you could do that. Any questions about that, understanding how, how it works?
I would like a little bit of clarity. So take number one, neighborhood schools and recognize natural boundaries. The, I understand picking which one, the number that we choose, does that mean we think that issue is of major importance? Or is it how much over the other issue? So sometimes I might think it's a three of major importance, but the other one might be a two. So then the difference in numbers would only be a one.
Okay. Well, the, the number that you want to sign is looking at those two criteria, which one's more important? And then when you're just looking at those two, is it a lot more important than that other one? Or, or just a little bit more important? And what we'll do is we'll add them all up.
So the numbers are comparison, not a value to how important? So like, A, if I picked two for A, it wouldn't be two straight across, it would be comparing it with the different, okay?
I mean, it, it could be two straight across, but that would be unusual.
Statistically, un-...
Right. And so what we will do is, is we, we can summarize this and tell you, okay, based upon this, you think that this one is the most important compared to all of them, and it'll, it'll assign the one that's the most important a 10, and the one that's the least important, the lowest number, whether it's a two, three, four, or whatever. And then we will summarize them for the whole group together and come up, come back to you and take it also to the work group so they can say, ah, this is what the board thinks. We think it's, we think it's more important to keep neighborhoods together than it is, you know, whatever.
Yeah, great, thank you.
So just for clarification, the board needs to complete this tonight. By the close of, by the close of this session would be ideal, but for sure by the close of the regular business session, and it needs to go to Jenny.
Do you want us to put our name on it?
I don't, no, not necessarily. But we do need them all back because it's part of the open public meeting. We want to comply with Open Public Meetings Act, so making sure that this is done at this meeting and given to Jenny by the end of the night.
We'll still get a grade if we don't put our name on the top of the paper.
I'll put your, I'll put it up, I'll tape it on the bulletin board. No, you don't have to put your name on it.
What, I, I have a question, a clarifying question. What is the minimize impact to students to the extent possible? Because I get like reduce overcrowding, consider bus transportation efficiency, those are minimizing impacts, but what is, what is E supposed to?
My recollection of that conversation, and I would defer to any board member that, or Susanna who remembers it differently, but it was in talking about the fact that we have multiple years of schools opening to be thoughtful about that entire boundary revision process, not do it like year by year. So it was...
Oh, so the example he used of moving multiple times.
Correct, correct, correct. That was the frame for the conversation as I recall it.
This, this isn't a perfect example of that, but it, but it helps you recognize. One thing is, I had mentioned earlier that I, I think what they said is when 16 opens here the next fall, that you could do the changes south of the freeway. And then when the others open north of the freeway, you could do that. That would take some students out of McGee here. But ultimately, these would go to 17, but 17 will be open next fall. So you would probably want to leave those at McGee for a year and then move them, so that your own community wants, right? As opposed to moving them somewhere else.
And we're, we're familiar. We had people come tell us, my kid went to McGee and then Franklin and then, you know, McLean Talk. Three years in a row, they moved twice or something.
Yeah. So we're trying to bring it out in those kinds of situations.
So when the ultimate boundary came, there would be a 2019 boundary change that would not include these guys.
So like, you know, how is McLaughlin is considered a feeder school to Chihuahua, right? Because a majority of the students go to Chihuahua. Like Stevens, Stevens, their kids are going to be in Pasco, so they're a feeder school.
That would be one is moving them multiple times.
Emerson, Ches, Longfellow, those are all feeder schools.
I know we're wrapping up, but thank you so much. This information was amazing and helpful and I, I just want to make a comment, kind of big picture. We've had recent discussions around the dual language program, the long-term facilities master plan, and now the boundary. And to me, those are all very connected and it seems like we need to have something where we kind of approach those because they all inform each other. Because one of the big things for me here is McLean Talk. What are we doing with McLean Talk? And that's going to affect how you do all these boundaries. What are we doing with the dual language program? Are we expanding that? Are we, you know, that is going to inform a lot of these boundaries. And then also the long-term facilities plan of, you know, what is our projection? Like Ms. Phillips said, you know, on the, another future bond, which of course we're going to need. I agree, I think that one, my perception now is that we would need a high school and a middle school on that next bond based on all the information we've been given over the last couple of years. So, like I said, my preference would be that we not move sixth grade until after we got that fifth middle school, but anyways, but I really want to see the middle school numbers as well because, again, to me, these things are all interconnected and we can't make a good, we can't make good decisions unless we have all that information together where we're looking at, what are we doing with dual language? What are our middle school and ele-, how does that change those number and what is our long-term facilities plan together?
Okay. Thank you.
Are we done? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reyes. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery, for coming and sharing that with us. And we'll look forward to the future reports on this.
All right.
And board members, when you have your stuff done, you want us to give it to Jenny?
Uh, you can give it to me for now.
Okay. And we'll be back at 6:30 for our regularly scheduled board meetings.